The meeting of county council will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Belief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, you have an optional prayer?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to start out by please do not let this be the last one. Let us pray. God is with us, for our hearts are moved with the wonder through compassion and deeds of caring. God, stand by us as we are attested in unforeseen ways. We know and trust you as we venture out to carry out our duties, goals, and priorities, circumstances of life, tried and proved over the years has take us to a calm and peaceful place. Thank you, God, for always being there. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
He's here somewhere.
Mrs. Lull?
Here.
Mr. Rastatter?
Here.
Chairman Leon?
Here.
Hearing of the public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? I understand this woman that called in is not coming. Anyone from the public, once, twice, third, and last time? Thank you very much. Next, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes of the previous meeting.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Dr. Faust?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Next is reports of county officials. County Executive Van Horv...
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing? Thank you very much. Finance and personnel, there wasn't any, so there'd be no reports from them. Other, any other council member wish to make any kind of a report? Okay, I was asked today to form a, some kind of fact-finding committee. And as Erie County Chairman, I'm going to do that. Erie County Council Chairman and two other council members appointed by the Chairman will make up this set committee. The committee will invite, have public meetings, question, respond, and inquire into the interest of the residents of Erie County in an open and transparent manner. And the three main areas of questions and confusion exist being, one is NPRC, a community college, is defined by applicable law and understanding. Two, does the financial and operational model meet the needs of Erie County students and their prospective employers in Erie County? Is it assessable to serve the needs of Erie County at scale? Like I said, I'll make that appointment now. Those three will be on it. I also would like to make one statement that the last meeting that I had, I happened to mention the difference between Democrats and Republicans. And at the party, Mr. Rastatter come over to me and said, you know, he says you're more Republican than you are a Democrat. I says, you might be right. But I think, you know, I am a little disappointed in even saying that because at the time that I was at CCAP, when I received the award from CCAP, I indicated in my speech then, and I'll indicate it now, the time has to come when the problems between so-called Democrats and Republicans are resolved. The time has to come when there is no such thing as a Democrat or a Republican, only people that are running for the particular office. It's a shame what's happening in Congress today. It's a shame what's happening as far as the President himself is concerned. But I can honestly say this, I've been proud to be a member of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania because it's never been something about whether it's red or blue, it never has been. And I think it's appropriate to say that all we did while we were there was to see what's in the best interest of people that you represent. Doesn't have to be a Democrat, doesn't have to be a Republican. And I think that's what I, you know, I apologize that I made that statement last time. I made it in jest, believe me when I did. Thanks for your, for your comments.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and I know that this year Doug Hill from CCAP is retiring. This is the end of his term. And I think one of the comments he brought from Dr. Seuss, and I'd like to use that same comment, he says, "Don't be sad because it's over. Smile because it happened." And I intend to do that. Thank you. Any other council member wish to make any statements? If not...
Sure, I'll make a statement.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to add a little to your comments there, this is not Washington. For our new members, this is not Washington. We do not fight like Democrats or Republicans and do nothing. We get things done. Most of the time, we vote unanimously. There are a few points that, you know, you might get a little tension on, but generally we work together and work for the betterment of the county. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, Mr. Clerk, second reading of ordinance 105.
Mr. Chairman, move the table, ordinance number 105, please.
Second.
Moved in second to table. No comment. Roll call on the table.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mrs. Lull? Mr. Rastatter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Chairman Leon?
No.
Okay, it's up, second reading of 105, and title only.
Second reading of ordinance number 105, 2019, 32nd, 2019, general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $270,125 recovered from GEIDC in bankruptcy proceedings.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to, for the second reading, but I'm going to amend afterward after...
Okay, you made a motion to put it on the agenda, second reading ordinance 105. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr.?
Go ahead, clerk. I would like to amend ordinance number 105 to strike out all the language that's in there except to appropriate the $270,125 to the, to our fund balance for 2019.
I have an amendment on the floor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
To clarify that if we pass this ordinance, as to what, just to tell you, we're going to put it in the general fund rather than assign it to the chamber. Is that part of the purpose of the amendment?
Yeah, we're, well, we're putting it in the, yeah. Because it will lapse if we don't.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to further clarify, so the amendments will apply to the face sheet in the exhibit.
Say that again?
The amendments will apply to the face sheet in the exhibit.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Now on the motion as amended, roll call.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a couple of comments if I can, and maybe clarify what we did there. These funds that came into Erie County in 2019, if they're not placed somewhere, they would then lapse. And, you know, council is undecided at the least of the proposal that was put forward to commit these funds to the Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership, at least at this time. And this was essentially a down payment of what was asked to be a ongoing commitment up to $500,000 towards the fundraising campaign that the chamber has going on. So by us amending this, rather than tabling or voting it down, by us amending this and striking out the language, but putting it in the fund balance, we preserve those funds for a future date. But I do have to say that in this process, you know, we've been asked by the administration many times to clarify our position, to bring more detail forward, to have a plan. These are some of the words that we hear on and on. And this particular ordinance was brought to us with no plan, no strategy, no detail at all. In fact, that's why we left it at the first reading to begin with. And even then, we only got back that the money was going to be dedicated to the Erie Chamber. What I have found out since then is that the check that the county received from this particular settlement was actually dated May 15th of this year, which was almost seven months ago. And I have to wonder what transparency is there when the check is being held in the county executive's office for over eight months? And what fiscal sense does that make by sitting on a check rather than depositing that particular check? And really, I have to believe that this was purposely set aside to come to us at the last minute to appropriate these funds in a project that the county executive has certainly said that she supports. And it's not that I'm against the chamber, but I do feel, as other members of councils have stated, that they have some proving to do. They have undergone this $5.2 million fundraising campaign and stating that they would not use any public money. Yet, they've come to the chamber, to the city of Erie, and to Agra, and hit each one of these entities up for, and put the pressure on for $500,000 from each of these groups. So this issue may come up next year, and it may be that at that time, I've learned something different, and that we can support the particular endeavor that they're undertaking. But I'm going to wait and see until they've exhausted their ability to have their fundraising campaign in the public sector as when they announced this campaign they said they would do. And so that's why I've taken the stance that I've taken this evening. And in particular, I have to say that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And if the county executive is expecting from council that, you know, to her satisfaction we need detail and strategy and plan, then we deserve that reciprocated to us as well. And we just did not receive that at all in this particular instance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we go on to the next possible sale of a parcel. Do I have a motion to do that?
It needs to be removed from the table, Dr. Faust.
Yes.
Yes, sir, as amended.
As amended, yes. Yep. Do I have a motion for...
I move that this be removed from the table. I have the possible sale of parcel from the deposit.
Any comments?
I'll comment.
Oh, wait a minute. This is, yeah, okay. Go ahead, you can comment.
Just real briefly, this is just some house cleaning. Usually, when the parcels come up, they usually have an address, a fiscal address, or a description of the property. Go see, this particular one, out of several, didn't have that. And we requested that it be tabled until we found out exactly where it was located. As above, before this, $250,000 for a lot on the 7th Street, which could have been anywhere on the 7th Street.
Thank you, Andre. It's been moved and seconded to remove from the table. Roll call on that, please.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion for the possible sale of the parcel.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments on that? If not, roll call.
On the sale, Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Now I'll entertain a motion for a second reading of ordinance 133, 134, and 135. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Okay. Comments? This is to make it a second reading. Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Okay, then let's go to second reading of ordinance 133, and title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 133, 2019, 2019 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget, revised expenditures for creation of expense line items for court-ordered placements.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments? Roll call.
On ordinance 133, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, second reading of ordinance 134, and title only.
Second reading of ordinance number 134, 2019, 2020 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget, revised expenditures for creation of expense line items for court-ordered placements.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On ordinance 134, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, second reading of ordinance number 135.
Second reading of ordinance number 135, 2019, 2020 Pleasant Ridge Manor Fund Budget, revised revenue and expenditures for creation of line item to correct 2020 budget general fund transfer.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments? Roll call on ordinance 135.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 52, and title only, please.
Resolution number 52, 2019, a resolution to approve the financial statements and independent auditor's report of the Erie Area Council of Governments for the year ending December 31, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Fatika, and seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call.
On Resolution 52, Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, Resolution 53.
Resolution number 53, 2019, approving solicitor contracts submitted by the Office of the Sheriff.
So moved. Second.
By Mrs. Fatika, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Any comments? Roll call.
On Resolution 53, Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Next, Resolution 54.
Resolution number 54, 2019, approving the 2020 Solicitor Contract for the Clerk of Records Office.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll support this one, just like I supported the last one. But the comments that our Chair made in Cockton, I really do agree with, in that we already have a solicitor for the county who has solicitors up under him. Perhaps going forward in the future, we should revisit the way that we dole out these contracts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call.
On Resolution 54, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
No.
Next, I'll entertain a motion for appointments of Sherry Heasley, Richard Allinger, Matthew Hunt.
Go ahead. No, I'm sorry, I was answering, Mr. Lull. I move, I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move that we deal with the items G through...
P.
Through P. That we deal with...
We got to put those on the agenda first.
Yes.
That's why I was trying to get them.
I move that we put items G through P on the agenda for tonight's...
Which ones do we have on there? We have...
G through P.
Mr. Chairman.
We have Matt McLaughlin, if one of them goes on.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Would it be easier if we, if we did G through J as one item, and then amended the agenda for K through P? And then if we wanted to do one item, then we could do it at that point?
I think that makes sense, and I withdraw, Matt.
All right, you withdraw. You have a motion to do G through J. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Andre. Any comments on it? Okay, roll call on items G, H, I, and J.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. All right, I'd like to add to the agenda, which would be the one county executive's appointment of Anita Kuchinski to replace Matt McLaughlin. That's one. The other one is appointment of Peter Benikos...
Benikos.
Benikos to the Erie County Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board. Another one is the appointment of Glenn Chase to the County MHID Board. And next is the appointment of Dave Maury to the MHID Board. That'll be all of them.
Pat Leitner to the...
Mr. Chairman, one more then. Patricia Leitner would be P.
She is two, the Drug and Alcohol...
All right, add that on too. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved. Second.
By Mr. Anderson, seconded by Dr. Faust. Comments? Okay, roll call on putting them on the agenda.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to adopt these. A motion would be fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt K through P.
Do I have a second to that?
Mr. Chairman, it'd only be through O.
Yeah, it is.
No, there's O.
P was the assessment.
You're right, it only goes to O.
I'm sorry, I'll amend that to O.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All these people are going to be good appointments, but in the 30 years that I, almost 30 years I spent on the campus of Mercyhurst College University, Pete Benikos is one of the best people that I ever interacted with, but he's appointed to our Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board.
Any other comments? Roll call on any appointments.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Okay, Resolution 55, and title only, please.
Mr. Chairman, has that been added to the agenda officially? I think not.
This wasn't on the agenda?
No.
That's right, I need a motion to put it on.
For tax assessment, correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr., Dr. Faust? Do I have a second to put it on? Then you move it?
That's okay, move it for now.
Okay.
It moved.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments on it? Roll call on putting it on the agenda.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes, now I'll entertain a motion for its adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mrs. Fatika.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we have that vote, may I read the title, just so it's in the record?
Okay, go ahead.
Resolution 55, 2019, approving the 2020 Solicitor Contract for the Tax Assessment Office, Board of Assessment Appeals.
Okay, I already have a motion and a second for that. Any comments? I do have one in this particular case. This is a contract for the Tax Assessment Office and the Board of Assessment Appeals. This is a quasi-governmental agency that's appointed by the council, and they've always had a solicitor on it. I can't vote against that. I did vote on the other ones because I always felt that they should have been... they should have been taken care of by the county executive, or, I'm sorry, by the county solicitor through his staff. Didn't happen, so that's why I'll be voting for this one. Roll call.
Mr. Rastadler?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lull?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to make a quick, a couple of quick comments. One, I just wanted to say that tonight, we certainly proved that we're all human. Most of the time, I think, we know exactly what we're doing. But sometimes, it doesn't appear that way. And that's a part of us, all being human and working together from time to time. And with that said, and I know we made plenty of comments at the meeting on the 10th, but I just want Carol Lull, Dr. Faust, Kathy Fatika, and Fiore Leon to know that it has been an honor and a privilege serving with you on this council. You are all absolutely some of the best citizens that this community has. And you certainly make our community and the county of Erie a better place. And I thank you for that.
Here, here. Any other comments from anyone? Go ahead.
I want to thank all of you that are a part of this body this year. I certainly am better. And I certainly have become more because of the service that you provide and your examples. When I got here, I thought I knew a lot, or a few things. Since then, I've come to know or find out that I actually know very little. And I especially want to say thank you, Fiore, for your mentorship. I really, rarely did I have a question. When I had a question, rarely, I mean rarely, did you ever tell me, I have to look and find out. You always knew the answer. You, my friend, when we talk about the home rule chart, when we talk about local folklore, when we talk about the great politicians of our time, I know they start with Lucio. Oftentimes, Representative Fabrizio is mentioned. Even my predecessor, Joseph Giles. But in the annals of local folklore, political folklore, when you talk about serving, 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 it starts and ends with you, Fiore. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? You know, I'd like to say that there was a little confusion this evening, but the reason why we've had that confusion is because we tried to cram a little too much on the agenda, something like a minute at the last minute. And it's very confusing to everyone. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Like I said, I'll be smiling. Thank you very much. We stand adjourned?